Call meeting in order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, welcome to the August 18th session of the Brookings City Council. As City Clerk, record council attendance.
Mayor and council members, as I call your name, would you please respond with present? Bacon?
Present.
Brink? Collins?
Aye.
Corbett?
Present.
Niemeyer?
Present.
Tilton Byrne?
Present.
Wendell?
Present.
Here we have a quorum, thank you. This time entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Removed.
Second?
We have motion and second. Council comments or questions? Seeing done, Bonnie, please call a roll.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Corbett?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is approved. Next, first item is Resolution 20-066, and I ask City Attorney to introduce this topic.
Thank you, Mayor. The proposed resolution would be the required step to terminate the appeal to the South Dakota Supreme Court with respect to the historic preservation litigation that's been pending for several years. So this resolution would authorize the city manager to execute a settlement agreement with the county of Brookings, and if this was approved, we would execute a settlement agreement and then communicate with the South Dakota Supreme Court clerk and withdraw the appeal, terminate that litigation, and the county expansion would be able to continue.
Okay, thank you. Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 20-66.
So moved.
Second?
We have motion and a second. This time it'll open up public comment, anyone care to speak to Resolution 20-66? Come up, please state your name, we have it for the record, please.
I'm Janet Merriman. I am the Chair of the Brookings Historic Preservation Commission. As you know, this project went through the 11-1 historic review process as required by South Dakota codified law. Within that process, the BHPC provided comment as requested by the SHPO, and we said that we didn't agree with the county's case report findings, and stated that the project would, the county stated the project would have no detrimental effects on the property, which is individually listed on the National Register of Historic Places. The SHPO made a determination that the project would encroach upon damage or destroy historic property that is listed in National Register of Historic Places. And really, at that point, that's when the question of authority came into play. Both the city and the county went forward with actions as if they both had authority, and that's really what the court's decision was on, is that the county had the authority, and the city didn't take those actions to appeal the determination filed by the county. And to kind of look at it and say, perhaps if there was a clear understanding of authority from the beginning of the process, that the city would have made that appeal to the county's determination, and maybe we'd be on a different path. The BHPC recognizes that it's your decision as to whether or not you feel an appeal would result in overturning that court decision, and whether it's in the city's interest to use the funds to pursue the appeal. The only concern we really have is whether the wording of the resolution could imply consent to the project and kind of lead to a precedent if expansion is needed in the future, because we're really worried about this project, about setting a precedence for expansion 10, 20, 30 years down the road. So if the city council thinks that they may have appealed the county's determination, when we could have just asked that you consider wording the resolution so that it doesn't imply consent. And the BHPC has not changed our position. This project does not meet the Secretary of the Standards Interior, Secretary of the Standards, excuse me, Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation or the Administrative Rules of South Dakota for New Construction Additions in Historic Districts, and the expansion of the courthouse grounds will be a detriment to a very important historic resource within the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak to this?
Pat Fishback, citizen of Brookings County. I would urge you to go forward with the appeal. Pulling the appeal portrays a false savings. Either scenario needs to include the money already expended in moving the appeal forward. Briefs have been filed and arguments have been made already in this case. I also am concerned about the fact that we're going forward on the jail expansion project on this site, spending 16, up to $16 million on a building that does not need to be there. The county's needs are much greater than the size that the building can be. We've given many, many reasons over the years about why this, why the proposed jail expansion should not take place on that site. I do have questions about the discussion item, which says the size and massing of a constructed detention facility will be minimized to the greatest extent possible as detailed in the submitted plan. I don't know what those submitted plans are, but this has already gone to the Board of Adjustment. The first plans, the variance was denied by the Board of Adjustment. The sec, so the building was minimized, and as we understood it, nothing was lost in that minimization. We were told it's going to suit the city well. I'm curious about what we're going to lose if it's minimized again. I also am interested that the discussion item says that the county would apply for a city building permit. So I'm curious as to whether or not the county would be needing to answer the questions about lot coverage, building height, density requirements, and actually general location of a public building. Thank you. I encourage you to go ahead with the appeal.
Okay, thank you. City Attorney, do you want to address any of those, or?
The, the city and the county would propose that the, that the historic review of the property has been concluded, and that the plans that were, the final plans that were submitted for the historic review would not be materially changed at this point. So we believe that based on what we propose to agree with the county, there wouldn't be any changes that would exceed in terms of the size, or the massing, or the placement of the building. Those things would not change from the last submission, and the last submission would be consistent with what the county approved at its determination on the historic review. So we feel that those issues have been addressed, and those will not be materially changed, and we believe the city is protected with language in the settlement agreement to that effect.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else care to speak to this topic? Okay, close the public hearing. Council members, your opportunity.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Wendell.
Yes, I have a variety of questions, and then I have a couple of statements. I note in the, in the background information attached to this item that we provided some estimates of the investment thus far. Can anyone tell me how much has been expended thus far in the appeal process?
I believe the appeal, the appeal to the Supreme Court would be at about $35,000. And of course, there would have been the Circuit Court costs incurred that I'm not included in that total, I'm not including in that total. So the appeal itself would be about 35.
How much have we incurred thus far?
I think we have invoices for approaching 30, and I'm sure we have accrued charges that have not been billed yet, which would be somewhere in the, in the $5,000 to $7,000 range beyond that.
Is that just on the appeal phase of this case, or entire?
Nope, that would be just the appeal phase to the Supreme Court.
Can you remind me how much the initial legal services cost prior to the initial ruling from the Circuit Court?
Yeah, I think, I think that number was, and I might need some help, but I think it was somewhere around the $38,000 range.
Okay. So I've got some other questions, but I would want to make a statement related to that. It would seem that we have agreed as a council, at least the majority of the council in recent weeks, that it was worth a $70,000 to $75,000 investment to proceed with the initial legal case and the appeal to the Supreme Court. In my mind, if the name of the game was, let's take this appeal to the South Dakota Supreme Court because this project and the precedent it might set, the flouting of our permitting process, both the local and the state Historic Preservation Commission process, the findings of the 11-1 review process, all of that was so important that we, as a council, the majority of us agreed just a matter of weeks ago, that if the entry fee to that game was $70,000, maybe up to $90,000, we were in. And it would have seemed to me now, we're at the third quarter, and we're going to take our ball and go home, even though we've invested north of $70,000 in investment thus far. We're not going to see this through to the outcome because we're nervous now about the outcome, or something has changed in recent weeks. I'm just not certain how we got this far down the path, and certainly, community members that have reached out to me and expressed concern about the use of taxpayer dollars, in my mind, would have much more severe concern about those taxpayer dollars if we're not even going to see the game through to its conclusion at this point. We might as well have just buried $70,000 at the Dakota Nature Park at this point, because in my mind, if we don't see this project through, we're, we have completely abdicated responsibility, both from a fiscal responsibility perspective, but also the importance of this project and our processes as a municipality. I'm also curious about the background that's provided associated with this issue that notes the future language of a settlement agreement. So that's to say that we've not yet articulated the settlement agreement between the city of Brookings and Brookings County. Am I understanding that correctly?
We've been negotiating a settlement agreement, so we do have a proposed agreement.
But we're not at a place now where that agreement would be publicly available, or that we're certain of the terms of that agreement that are agreed upon by both parties, is that correct?
Legal counsel for both parties have been negotiating it on the last three or four days, basically, back and forth numerous times, with involvement with the city manager and so forth.
So you'll have to forgive me for this next statement, but I have to say that my faith in good action from Brookings County is shaken. I think I've been really honest over the last two years that I have real concerns in the way that Brookings County has followed this process. You'll remind, I'll remind you that two years ago, I requested a joint public study session between Brookings County and the city council. Some of you sitting on the dais tonight said, that's really not our business, we shouldn't wade in into their processes. We shouldn't have a public conversation around this process, and I think that's how it got so far down the path before we actually weighed in, because we assumed that they would follow the pre-established processes as good faith actors. Now, we've learned that they've not followed the 11-1 review process or its findings. They've not abided by the ruling of the state Historic Preservation Process, and I have to wonder how they will be able to abide by the true spirit of our city permitting process. And so I've got to be honest and say, my faith in what this settlement agreement will look like, and the willingness of all parties to participate faithfully in that agreement is a bit shaken at this process. I think the last thing I would say is just, I am, I'm really perplexed at why we would step back at this stage of the game. You know, I have said from the moment I ran for a seat on the Brookings City Council that Brookings is the best community in the state of South Dakota, but that it didn't get that way by accident. That generations of leaders, many of them elected officials on the city council and the county commission, cast a long-range vision for what would be best for this community. In particular, how we would invest in the core of our community, our historic residential neighborhood, the South Dakota Children's Museum, the Courthouse Square, the gateway to historic downtown Brookings. None of that just landed there, all of that was placed there and preserved by design. And to me, this seems like we're turning a corner that's going to be pretty impossible for us to come back from. And I understand that there's some real dissension about who has authority over what happens on the Courthouse Square, but as somebody sitting on this council right now, I am very fearful of the precedent that we are setting in terms of our relationship and relationships with municipalities and county commissions across the state of South Dakota by stepping away. I also have to say that I, I just want you to picture what we have, what we have shared publicly in recent weeks around the need to invest in our municipal law enforcement center. A couple of years from now, let's say five, six years from now, you're walking through the core of our community, and you walk past the county detention facility, and you notice near the entryway, there is a stone etched with the year of this dramatic expansion, expansion. Maybe it says 2021 or 2022. And then you walk a couple of blocks down the street, in the shadow of this massive detention facility, to the Brookings City Police Department. And you notice near the entryway to that building, there's also a stone etched with the year of a giant expansion on that project that cost taxpayers in this community millions of dollars. Maybe it says 2026 or 2027, and in your mind, wouldn't you think, in a county of 35,000 people, the city council and the county commission couldn't find a way to build a joint law enforcement facility? They had a long life, but instead, within five or six years of each other, they both dumped millions of dollars into a detention facility within sight of one another? I will be embarrassed to say I sat on the council that allowed that to move forward. For that reason, I'll absolutely be voting no, and I hope that you will reconsider, and at the very least, we can see this appeal process through. If we lose the appeal, I think we have to step away and consider ways that we can partner. But in my mind, walking away now just disregards the $70,000 we've already spent to get this far.
Thank you, Councilman Wendell. Anyone else care to speak to this? Councilman Collins?
First off, I want to apologize to everybody for being late and being dressed this way. I did have a doctor appointment that took longer than it was supposed to. So, you know, I just want to say that the taxpayer, we talk about money net, and we talk about taxpayers, what they've already are spending when this program first came out. I believe it was around $10 million, and now we're up to $17.1 million that the taxpayers have to pay. I know, I know the quote was 15, but then you have soft costs that'll go up about $2 million. So that was my concern, was how much money that the taxpayer is going to have to pay. Secondly, when I talked to the city manager, I wasn't comfortable that we were going to win this case at all, so we're going to spend more money on that. Thirdly, we have to have a jail now. We can't wait, and the way our budget is right now, what happens if we win? If we happen to win this case, we won't see a joint law enforcement center. I believe that as long as we're all on here, we won't see that, because we have no money until 2028. And the county jail for a number of different reasons, we have to have that right now. And that was always been my position on it as we've gone through this.
Okay, thank you, council. Anyone else care to speak to this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
I would, maybe just to respond to a couple of notes that Councilman Collins brings up. I, I don't think anybody in this room is comfortable with the idea that the costs for this jail expansion have escalated dramatically in recent years. I don't think any of us want to prolong the process and see those costs extended, but in my mind, that's not on the city council. That's on the Brookings County Commission in the path that they chose. So I'm not answering for those additional costs. We encouraged them, and members of this community, their constituents encouraged them for years prior to this point, to take a different path. So those soaring costs don't rest with the Brookings City Council, and I'm not interested in rewarding the path they chose to take. My second thought is that I recognize there's tremendous need for a jail expansion. I think even the folks who are encouraging us to pump the brakes and reconsider this location are doing so primarily because even by the own projections provided by the Brookings County Commission, they will outgrow that facility in 20, 25 years. So there is tremendous need today, but, you know, I've worked in the public sector in South Dakota for the better part of the last 15 years. You don't build public facilities in this state thinking you'll get 20 to 25 years of useful life out of them. So 20 years from now, when by their own projections they outgrow that facility, what will they do then? They've promised us loosely that they won't encroach on that historic neighborhood, and that they won't turn the corner and further encroach on the Courthouse Square. That only leaves one other path, which is to strand a $15 million investment and rebuild someplace else. So either they will encroach on the historic neighborhood, they will turn the corner and encroach on the Courthouse Square, or they will strand their investment and build elsewhere. And in my mind, if we step away from the appeal process, we're just stepping back as a coun, as a council and saying, good luck to you, and that's a problem for a future council to worry about. And I'm just not comfortable doing that, and I don't know that that's the spirit that any of us do our jobs. So I just want us to think long-term, I'm talking 20 years long-term, about the work we can do to reinvest in the core of our community and preserve the square.
Councilmember, well, Councilmember Brink?
He can go.
Oh, okay, Councilmember Collins?
You're right, as a city council, that's not our issue, but as a taxpayer, I've been upset about this ever since years ago when this first came out. Now, if, speaking on that, if we decide to go through and do a city-county building, well, we're going to have to raise taxes. And I don't know about anybody here, but I don't want my taxes going up 25 to 35% to pay for that kind of thing, because right now, if you look at a new police department, $12 million, a new jail, 17, 15, or whatever, there's no way we can pay that, there's no way the county can pay that. The only thing we'll be able to do is to raise taxes. Like I said, 25, 30% is just way too much for me to want to pay and ask the taxpayers to pay that as well. Thank you.
Now, Councilmember Brink?
I would like to just state that everything you said, Councilmember Wendell, I, I agree with, and I have a great amount of empathy with your statements. You asked earlier, you know, what has changed, or what is different than, than it was when we went down this road. Certainly, when we chose to go down this path of appeal, we were not dealing with a COVID-19 global pandemic, which is life-altering for many organizations, many municipal and household budgets, and so that's a change. I also would say that, you know, initially when we talked about this as a council, I felt the projection for the legal fees were, were somewhere in that $35,000 to $40,000 total bucket, not, not 70. And so I see that we have the opportunity to spend another $35,000 or something to get to the finish line here, and I understand the reasons for wanting to get there. I would like to say that I don't think this is the right place for the jail. I don't think it's good for our central downtown, I don't think it's good for our historic district, I don't think it's good for our business community, I don't think it's really good for anyone. And what should have happened is five or six years ago, some partnerships and some collaborations should have happened between the county and the city, and people, other people that are not in this room tonight should have had those conversations, and there should have been a good faith, collaborative, legitimate attempt to work together to come up with a solution that was different. That didn't happen, and we can, we can stand up here and bemoan that fact, and certainly, that was a lot of the reason why I wanted to go into this appeal process initially, because I thought this is a wrong, and we need to right this wrong, and this is not a precedent that we want to have, and this is not a position that we want to go down. And I completely still agree with all of that, and I do think that this project, just like Councilman Wendell said, it's going to either be a stranded investment, it's going to require them to eat up more of that space. Those things are true. However, I, I feel at this point in time that our chances of being successful with this appeal are maybe lower than what I previously had thought. I also take into account that we didn't have a great plan for what's next, if we did win this appeal. If we did, if we did get that ruling, it wasn't clear to me how, how the county of Brookings and how the jail needs could be met in the short term, and that's, that's a problem too. And there is a potential, if, if we allow the county to move forward with their project now, maybe they can lock in some of the favorable bid amounts that are possible with the sale shopping of doing construction during a pandemic. And those are the things that I hope. I, I feel like we're faced with a bad decision, two bad choices, and they both don't taste good to me for various reasons. But I will be voting to, to withdraw our appeal, and I just wanted to explain to the public why that is, and please know that that was not an easy decision to come to.
Thank you, Councilmember Brink. Councilman Niemeyer?
So I wasn't real crazy about suing the county the first time around. Suing taxpayer dollars there and taxpayer dollars, I just thought it was a bad, a bad thing to do to begin with. But I went ahead with it just to see what happens, and, and to see if we could get a favorable judgment from the Circuit Court judge. We did not, he shot us down completely. And so when it came time for us to talk about appealing, I was not in favor of it, I still am not. I think we, we wasted time and money on this. Do I think that the jail is in the right place, or going to be in the right place? No. I talked to the county commissioners, each one of them separately, individually, numerous times, tried to explain to them that there are other alternatives, you didn't spend your due diligence looking for an alternative site. I wasn't crazy about what they were, what they were planning, and I went on deaf ears. So I think it was, you know, after the, after the Circuit Court decision, I was ready to move on. We probably already ruined our relationship with the county that might be irreparable. And, and I think it's, it's time for us to dwell on, on something other than this, move on. I'm, I will be voting in favor of this resolution, and I think that it's time for us to move on and deal with other, other things that are more important.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Tilton Byrne, we don't want to forget you out there. Did you want to speak to anything?
Thank you. I, I do have a couple of comments I would like to make first. I just want to commend Councilman Wendell for how he articulated his points tonight. I wholeheartedly agree with the comments that he made, and I will be joining him in voting no on this resolution. I feel at this point, we have already committed the financial resources towards this appeal process, and to pull out, at this point, doesn't, doesn't even make financial sense to me, because we have already committed those dollars. Additionally, since the beginning, I have felt that taking a hard look at the process that was used both for the 11-1 review and the permitting process is quite important. And at this point, we're just going to be throwing in the towel and not even giving the court the opportunity to weigh in. I feel like there's a lot of assumptions being made on what the courts will decide. And in my opinion, given the fact that we have already given the financial resources towards this appeal, I think we owe it to our taxpayers to use those dollars to see how this plays out. If we were to lose, then we would move forward in that regard and, and just try to come to terms with that. But if we were to win, then it would open opportunities for us to move in a more positive direction with this project. So I also will be voting no on this resolution.
Okay, thank you. Any other council members' comments? Councilmember Bacon?
I want to thank Councilmember Wendell for so passionately articulating all of the reasons that this is such... reasons that this is such an unfortunate decision that we have to make. We have struggled with this since I've been on council. I've talked to other council members, I've talked to community members who are passionate on both sides of this issue. There are members of this community who are as passionate about dropping this as there are those who support it, and I appreciate all of them. Those who know me know that the historic portion of our community is a source of pride for me, and it's very, very important to our community. But I have been struggling, not just with the money, because as Councilmember Wendell said, we've already spent most of that money. But the costs going forward, the taxpayer implications, either way, I don't know if it would be a 25% increase in our property taxes, but I know that it's been mentioned that there could. So I have struggled. This has been one of the hardest decisions I've had to work on, and I'm probably going to vote in favor of this.
Councilmembers, any other, Councilman Wendell?
I just, I want to make one more note. I think clearly we know where the votes are going to land this evening, but I think a couple dollar amounts have been shared, and for the public record, I think it's important that we circle back on those items. I don't think anyone's done real firm forecasting on what a tax increase to a municipal jail or a law enforcement facility might look like. And so I don't know that we're facing an option of either proceeding with this appeal or encouraging our community to take on a 25% tax increase. So I want to make sure that we acknowledge that, you know, that's really not a firm number. I also have to acknowledge that, you know, that forecast based on the McKinstry study on the needs of our existing police department that circled $12 million was us building a new facility on our own. There are tremendous needs in our current police department facility, so this doesn't go away. This decision and our law enforcement needs as a municipality will follow us no matter what we decide tonight. I think either we continue to try to advance the cause of taking our municipal dollars and potentially combining them with county dollars to build a joint facility, or we go it alone from here. And the decision we make tonight, I think, will haunt us over the next couple of years because the conversation around our police department facility won't go away, it will intensify. And we will be moving forward alone, whether we're delaying till 2028 when we have a whole lot more money to put towards it, or we do some Band-Aid approaches to our existing facility over the next couple of years. We're going to have to make that investment, and I think we walk away from this process now, and the county will continue to advance their jail expansion on their own. And we'll be looking at a facility just a couple blocks away that we're going to have to dump a couple million dollars into no matter what. So I think whatever we decide tonight will not just haunt us physically with that jail expansion that will be booming on our courthouse square, but will also haunt this council with the decisions we'll have to make to address our municipal police department facility needs over the next four and five and six years. And it's not $12 million. You're right, we don't have the money to go do that on our own. If we were combining some municipal resources with county resources with some long-range planning in mind, I think we have a clearer path, and it's unfortunate that we're going to walk away and have to grapple with that on our own.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please call a roll.
Brink.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Corbett.
Aye.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Tilton-Burne.
No.
Wendell.
No.
Bacon.
Aye.
The resolution 20-66 is approved. Next, we'll go into a study session. Wait, people want to leave the room first. Give it a minute. Purpose of the study session is just kind of a deep dive for the council members. It's a great opportunity for us to hear from others, specifically in this case, two staff members, but also for council to ask questions and talk to each other. The purpose that we came up with these in 2012 was that we then could be better informed when we do get to a council meeting. And at a council meeting, of course, that's when we open up for public hearing. And so there's no public hearing at a study session, but again, there will be great opportunities at the first and second readings of these. So this time I turned over to the city clerk and the city attorney to speak to a discussion on video lottery.
Good evening, mayor, council, and members in the audience. To begin tonight, I want to share with you a little history about video lottery in the state of South Dakota. Prior to '86, video lottery was not authorized in the state of South Dakota. That's 31 years ago. In 1989, video lottery began in the state of South Dakota, which was the first state nationally to allow video lottery. Moving forward in '94, the South Dakota Supreme Court declared video lottery unconstitutional. That went to a vote of the people of the state, and video lottery was restarted that fall in November. Since then, video lottery has been brought to a vote of the people twice, both where the voters rejected the opportunity to repeal video lottery. Moving to the video lottery history for the city of Brookings, we were unable to determine exactly what year the first machines were installed here in Brookings. But you will see through the years, in 2000, 2001, the city did interpret state law with an opportunity to regulate video lottery. And when we mean regulate, we mean by the number of machines and/or by the number of establishments. Moving forward to 2011, you will see that there was a South Dakota Supreme Court decision that further clarified state law for the municipalities. And basically, what it did was stating the municipalities cannot regulate video lottery. You cannot state only want X amount of machines or only want X amount of establishments in your municipality, so that those ordinances that we had established were removed. So in state law, we have South Dakota law 42-78-64, which there are six criteria in which items that the city can consider when someone comes forth and applies for a video lottery placement in their establishment. So I want to go through those one by one for you, these six criteria. And if you have questions on either of them, any of them, please don't hesitate to disrupt us, and we'll answer your questions at the time so that it's pertinent to the number that we're on. So the first one is the number of establishments currently licensed for video lottery. Brookings currently has 25 establishments licensed. The average number from 2010 to present is 25. 25 establishments in our community has video lottery. The average number of machines per year is 174 machines located within the city limits of Brookings. Yes?
The Supreme Court has decided that we can't regulate how many establishments can have it, but yet in our criteria, the number of establishments currently licensed, we can regulate it? Give me the difference here.
Perhaps I can address that point. Municipality regulates typically through either an ordinance or a resolution. And so attempts by cities to establish additional rules to monitor or limit the number of establishments in the city through an ordinance or a resolution have really been determined to be in excess of the process that's allowed in municipality. So as a result, what we can do is we can take an application that's submitted to us and apply the statutory criteria on a case-by-case basis. And so by doing that, we are influencing the location and the number of establishments within the city by virtue of applying the criteria when we make each video lottery application decision. But we are not establishing a general set of rules that apply or limit video lottery. And maybe that distinction that I'm making is a little bit subtle, but it's just that we have to act on a case-by-case basis to consider applications that come before us, applying the existing criteria set forth in state law. And we can't create additional regulations to in any way affect establishments. So if we look at the criteria, we can limit the number of establishments in the city by applying the criteria when we look at an application for video lottery. But in terms of establishing an ordinance that, for example, limits the number of video lottery machines by population would be an overarching regulation that would not be specific to the applications that were to be considering under this particular statute, if you follow me there. So we're looking at it on a case-by-case basis with the application submitted to us and applying the criteria. And so we can, under criteria one, we can look at the number of establishments as pointed out in the community. Is that too many? At least under this criteria? Are the number of establishments in this particular building too many? Or the square footage or the nature of that particular entertainment facility? And that would be a criteria taken from state law, and you have the prerogative to apply that criteria, as well as the other five.
Related question, but slightly different. I understand you're going to go through these six criteria that we could use to factor into maybe future decisions about video lottery. To your knowledge, have we utilized any one of these six criteria for any existing vid lot machines and license renewals that we have in existence in Brookings today?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
I would say that we've incorporated the considerations in this statute into our previous ordinances on video lottery. So I think it's probably been considered, but considered in the context of an existing ordinance, because this statute's been on the books for many years. So I would say it's probably been considered.
And that would be prior to the 2011 Supreme Court decision?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask for clarification? I want to make sure I understand and the folks at home understand. So one of the criteria is number of establishments, but we don't necessarily have a threshold in our community. It's just an item we can consider as we determine whether or not it's appropriate to add an additional.
All right. So on the next slide here, you'll see that we've got licenses that are able to allow video lottery. So that's basically any on-sale alcoholic license can apply to have video lottery. One license that we have in the city that's not able to allow video lottery is the off-sale liquor license held by the Brookings Municipal Liquor Store. So you'll notice on the numbers up there on licenses able to allow video lottery, if you add them all up, there's 94. But what I want you to know is we have several business owners in town that have perhaps a on-sale liquor license and an on-sale malt license, or they have an on-sale malt license and an on-sale wine license. So there is some duplication of business counts up there in those numbers. Criteria number two, the proximity of the business to other establishments licensed for video lottery. So when you look at this map, you will see that we've kind of outlined in black the areas that seem to have video lottery within the city of Brookings. In the northeastern part, we've got four. We've got one down on 22nd Avenue. There's one down on 20th Street South. There's three in that south main area, just on the southwestern, southeastern part of the airport. And then we have 16 that would be considered in the northwest part of town, which includes the downtown area. So when you're considering establishments with the same physical building location, they are required to have a physical separation within that building, under that roof. If they want to have more than one malt, like say, for example, one malt license, one on-sale malt license with 10 machines, they want to have two. So they would have to have two separate areas with a wall and a door that is signed that says only those over the age of 21 may enter. And then within that suite, because it comes with that on-sale alcohol license, they have to have a separate serving station and storage for those two individual locations within that facility. So you're never going to walk into a room that has 20 machines. It'll be a max of 10 machines. So with each on-sale license, those businesses can have up to 10 video lottery machines. There are several in town that only have two or three or five, but there are those that also have 10. Any questions on this criteria? Moving on then to criteria number three, the type of business and the manner in which the applicant has proposed to operate it. So first and foremost, let me remind you, they must have an on-sale alcohol license in order to qualify to apply for a video lottery application. So they have to meet that first criteria. In Brookings, many of our businesses are a standalone bar, perhaps a convenience store that has video lottery in the back, or maybe it's a recreational facility. But the most common manner tied to each location is that small room with 10 machines with a separate serving and storage of alcohol. That's the most common in our city. Any questions on that?
Hypothetically, you had a business that has an alcohol license, already has a video lottery. The other one would, you know, if they wanted to do additional ones and they applied just for the beer license, it would only be able to have beer in that room then?
Correct.
Okay, just clarifying.
Criteria number four, the location of the business in relation to other businesses, residential areas, or activities within the same general area. So to help understand this one, we pulled up and marked on here as well the placement of those current video lottery machines. So you can see that the pink and the yellow and the green are either business or industrial zoned areas. The blue is all considered residential. So you'll see there are several that are within a block, maybe less, of a residential area. We have several that fits that close proximity to a residential area. Any questions? Okay, we'll move on to criteria number five, the extent to which minors frequent a business connected to the one proposed. So we've mentioned before that we have some standalone bars. We've also mentioned that we have several that are located in convenience stores, our gas stations. An example I want you to think about is Hy-Vee has an on-off malt license and an on-off wine license. They could come to you and apply for video lottery application placement. It's just something to consider, and I wanted you to be aware of that.
Can I ask a question on this? Maybe it's the language, and maybe Steve, you can interpret how you've seen this applied elsewhere, but you know, when they talk about the extent to which minors frequent a business, are we thinking about, you know, percentage of total sales that are dedicated to one type of product? I mean, how are you measuring an extent of minors frequenting a business?
I think that the history of that particular consideration dates back to the alcoholic beverage licensing criteria, where that same language applies when you look at whether or not a malt beverage license should be issued in a certain location. So historically, I think the legislature probably adopted some of the same considerations for video lottery as they have for alcoholic beverage licensing. So, and so one of the concerns historically, you know, has been with respect to the sale of off-sale beer or, you know, more recently, on-sale beer in a proximity of a convenience store. And so if, you know, it was located in a location near a school, and I can think of one on Highway 14 outside of Brookings, that's, you know, within close proximity of the school, and the kids would go over and, you know, get snacks and so forth at the convenience store, then whether or not that place was suitable for a malt beverage license or for video lottery, you know, that would be a... know, that would be a concern to pay attention to, because we've seen probably with the development of video lottery, you know, many small video lottery locations connected to convenience stores. So I guess the point would be that minors might not be as apt to go to a standalone malt beverage facility that didn't have the items or products or activities that would attract minors if it was a standalone versus perhaps the convenience store, which might be a different consideration for the council.
Any more questions on that one? All right, we'll move forward to criteria number six, the effect the proposed business has on economic development. So of all the criteria, this is one that really can have a positive impact on a community. It can make a business more viable, and it can contribute not only to the city, but also the state's economy.
So just a question here. Isn't that being really subjective on our part? You know, as a council, we sit here and say, well, I think you're going to hurt somebody else's development, so we don't want you to... I mean, just thinking out loud here. Am I just reading too much into it?
I would say that's a decision as a council member that you would have to make.
Okay, thank you.
So when we're thinking about these criteria, we wanted to help you identify just the do's and the don'ts. So municipalities may consider the number of video lottery establishments in the city which are currently licensed for video lottery. Municipalities can apply the criteria given in the state law and deny any application for video lottery placement. Municipalities can approve an on-sale alcohol license and deny a video lottery license request. A municipality may influence video lottery placement at any one time only, and that is at the time the on-sale malt and our wine licenses are applied for. Existing video lottery licenses may not be denied, renewal, or transfer based upon the criteria set forth in state law 427A-64. And municipalities may not restrict the number of establishments certified for video lottery to a number less than those licensed as video lottery establishments as of March 1st of 1994. And in 1994, we had 17 establishments licensed for video lottery with a total of 119 video lottery machines. So as you move forward to the action items that are going to come forward to you at a future council meeting, a motion can be made to approve or deny the video lottery request for a business pursuant to the state law. And applying for the criteria, as a council member, you can state a reason or one of the criteria in your motion, but you are not required to do so. But you do have the right to state your reason. Yes, Councilmember Bacon.
Back to the economic development piece. Are you able to tell us, A, what our current revenue from those machines are that come into the city coffers?
The city of Brookings is allowed to apply a $50 per video lottery machine fee, which is renewable annually.
And that's it? That's all the income we get? So this economic development theory...
Yes, that is all the income the city of Brookings gets.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Brink.
Just to point a clarification there, that's the income that the city receives, but the business owners that are operating that business are still taking in a profit to do that, and they're still maybe spending that in our community.
Correct.
Right, okay. And how much, do we have an estimation on how profitable the average vid lot machine is? I don't know, I don't think that was in the details. I don't know if the state has any...
The state didn't give me any dollar figure on that. I did ask the question, but I didn't receive an answer.
Okay, okay. Makes sense. Since I'm talking, I'll just keep going with this. I know that people have strong opinions about video lottery and whether or not it's a good pursuit, you know, for people to be engaged in. There are challenges with addiction, things like that. I don't feel like that's the job of this city council to legislate people's morality or those choices that they choose to make. And I really see this as an ongoing state issue, to the extent that the state is allowing this practice to continue and has regulated it heavily. I think, given the existence of a couple hundred machines in our community that have not gone through this process of having six criteria applied to them in order to determine whether or not they're allowed to exist, I feel like that would be hard to ask future applicants to have to be subject to those rules when they haven't been applied to any of the situations that exist today. And so that's my opinion on this. I think it's something to be aware of, and certainly if we saw a huge spike in applications or something like that, I feel like that would maybe make us think differently on that. But that's how I'm seeing it. Curious what others think.
Mr. Mayor, this is Holly.
Yes.
I guess, kind of in regards to what Councilmember Brink just stated, I'm a little confused as to whether or not these six criteria have or have not been utilized in the past. It's my understanding that these six criteria have been available for this council and previous councils to use when there are circumstances where these six criteria might be called into question, correct? So in theory, these could have and may have been used by previous councils in this council?
I'm pretty confident that we've applied these, because these have been statutory for a long time. We supplemented the existing video lottery statutes with a municipal ordinance, which I believe would have had similar types of criteria. And so I think that they have been applied when we've made decisions.
Thank you. So by evaluating these tonight, we aren't necessarily introducing them as new criteria for permits going forward. Rather, this particular council is taking the time at this point in time to just learn more about what the criteria is and how we might be able to apply that, given the recent applications that we have seen in our community.
I would comment, Holly, that I think what we're doing is a helpful exercise to kind of reaffirm or refresh our understanding of the application of these rules. Yes, it's been 10 years since we had some clarification from the South Dakota Supreme Court on this point. But I think it is important to clarify that we do have the opportunity to apply pretty comprehensive video lottery machine placement rules. I think these do cover a wide range of considerations. And we have the authority, at the time that an applicant comes in for an additional malt beverage license with a video lottery request at the same time, to apply the criteria and focus just on the six, these six criteria, and make a decision as to whether or not that video lottery placement is appropriate in that location. And that's a pretty local decision that's been delegated to municipalities because of our knowledge of the community and all of the facts that the criteria would explore.
To that point, Councilmember Hilton-Burne, I do remember a few years ago that that was a discussion with the council, some of these six items as we move forward with denying video lottery decisions. So I think we have applied it. One just sticks in my mind a lot more than others. So Councilman Niemeyer?
I was going to say, I recall the same thing. We had at least two applications that there was a major amount of a discussion because of the location of both of those. One, basically near a residential area and really no other businesses by it. And the other one was the location that says next to church and where there were early childhood and after-school programs. And there was major concern on both of those. But they still both have their video lottery licenses. They prevailed. We allowed that to go ahead. But there was discussion on it, and it was based on location.
I would just make a point on that. It seems like if we're going to use a location as a criteria and then the proximity to a residential zone, nearly every piece of land in this town is a residential zone. So the likelihood of even being proposed to be somewhere other than near that, I think, is hard to understand. I guess what worries me is the subjectivity of these criteria and how they might be actually applied to future applications. Like you noted earlier, the extent to which minors frequent the business, that's hard to quantify. And I certainly think we'd have some challenges if we were to cherry pick and allow some applications to go through, and then we were maybe not allowing some others to go through. And so I guess it's kind of how I'm seeing is that I'm skeptical of how consistent we could be in trying to apply those criteria into the future while taking into account the existing fact that we have a whole bunch of locations that those criteria were not applied to, and we don't have any ability to change that now, except for if we were to not renew. Did I understand that correctly? You'd have the opportunity to not renew a license, but you wouldn't be able to discuss the location within the setting of the business of where that license is being applied? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. But no, you would, once a video lottery license is given, and that comes up for annual renewal alongside their on-sale liquor or malt or wine license, you will not be able to revoke that video lottery permission.
Got it. So all we're really talking about here is different rules for future new scenarios. We're not going to do anything about the existing scenarios that we have here.
Okay. Any other questions? Again, Councilman Wendell.
I might just note again for folks who are trying to follow the conversation, you know, my interest in this particular topic was not necessarily in any new rules, but just an understanding of existing criteria at the state level. It's a topic we had not visited since I joined the council. So this has been really helpful, and it's been presented exactly as I was hoping it would, to walk us through the six criteria and examples of how you might apply them when we're being tasked with making these decisions. So I really appreciate this, and I do think for those of us that maybe we're not on the council the last time we had to make a consideration that required lots of discussion, this has been helpful.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead. Councilmember Hilton-Burne.
I would just say, in regards to the subjectivity of these points, it does seem that the city of Brookings has previously tried to bring a little bit of more consistency to the way that this has been done by way of implementing ordinances, but that the state has indicated that that is not, that's not allowed. And so I would just say that it really is not only within our purview, but part of our responsibility to really look at each of these criteria each time a permit does come forward, knowing that we are kind of prevented from putting in some of those parameters that would give kind of a blanket cover to how we approach these. The state has very clearly made their point that these are the criteria we can look at and only on a case-by-case basis. And so whether these are subjective points or not, this is the way the state has laid out the process. And so I think it is really our responsibility to make sure that we do our due diligence and look at those six criteria whenever we do provide a permit for these video lottery machines. I also want to echo the sentiment that I greatly appreciate this presentation. I think that this information is going to be incredibly helpful going forward as we make the decisions on these kinds of permit applications. So thank you very much for putting this together and presenting it in this way.
Councilman Collins had his hand up for a while.
Yeah, this presentation is done really well. I think you did a really good job on it. My question is, as a council, do we decide if they met the criteria? Or how do we visit about that? Or how do we decide if the applicant actually passed all the criteria?
I think we should, if we have an application, it would be a duty to apply this. We have a responsibility to apply the criteria. So we'll need to have the criteria readily available with the next application. And then certainly some of the criteria might be more important to a council member than to another council member. So I think that if you apply, and there are standards, I think, general standards the Supreme Court has given us in terms of how, to what extent a council is obligated to apply a set of facts in a decision. And you have to sincerely apply the, and follow the criteria. And then the extent to which you choose to voice your comments and so forth is up to you. But ultimately, you can have any kind of discussion that you think is appropriate that would touch on these criteria, and then a vote would be taken as to whether to approve or deny the application.
So would it be advisable for the applicant to come in here and say, this is how I met this criteria, this is how I met this one all the way through, or not?
I think that that, you know, would be a better discussion than not appearing, in my opinion, because it gives you an opportunity to fully investigate. And I think that that makes the application or review of the criteria more effective.
Thank you.
Councilmember Collins, we will encourage every applicant to make an appearance at this council meeting to which the action should be held. We will encourage them to be here in person.
Councilmember Brink?
I was simply going to make a comment that of these six criteria, in no way, shape, or form would we be permitted to make a decision based on the location, for example, of the company or the entity that's doing business. For example, we couldn't say we only want to give licenses to in-state businesses versus out-of-state. That would have no part of this conversation whatsoever, whether they're a Brookings resident or non-resident or anything like that.
Okay. Thanks again. And I shared with Bonnie earlier, I had a lot of comments from the public today that read into this and said, well, that's some great information to have. So, and that's why we have a study session, because we're coming up next, the Assistant City Manager coming up to speak to subsidy. And so anybody that came in late, the study session is just an opportunity for us to have these conversations amongst ourselves. And then first or second reading, people have the opportunity for public comment on these. So Mr. Meshke, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. City Council requested discussion on the Brookings School District funding as an outside agency at the July 28th City Council meeting. There are very understandings on if the origins of the funds were a payment in lieu of taxes, or the school district needed funds, and the telephone fund had an abundant resource at the time. Over the years, the telephone utility has become a less profitable industry with the advancements of competing cell phones. City Council makes a determination on the Brookings School District subsidy funding, up to 15% of the amount transferred to the city from the Brookings Municipal Utility per the governance and ends policy. Over the past 10 years, the city of Brookings has provided between $190,000 to $207,200 to the Brookings School District on an annual basis. The 2021 Brookings School District subsidy request is for $207,200 to be used for three junior kindergarten classes. As part of the 2021 budget presentation, city staff made a recommendation to fund the school district at $195,000, which is consistent with the 2020 funding amount. With that, staff opens up the topic for city council discussion.
Councilmember Hilton-Burne, were you the one that asked us to come up at a study session, if I remember?
Yes, I was.
Okay. Then you get to speak to this first, or any questions you might have?
So I guess one of the questions I've had is, does the amount of funding that we provide to the Brookings School District directly link to any specific fund? It seems that there has been historical linkage between the amount of money the school gets and our municipal utility. But is that a direct link in our budget that is essentially like a line item that moves over from one fund to another?
To the best of staff's understanding, there's not a direct correlation between that.
Has there been any level of agreement between any of the parties historically that we're aware of that says this level of funding goes to the school district because of XYZ, whether that be an amount of money that comes from utilities or anything else? It seems that there has been some discussion between the city and the school board that seems to indicate there is some kind of linkage there. But I've not been clear on what that linkage is. And so I guess I'm just trying to get to the bottom of how did this precedent start, where the city provided... where the cities provided a good sum of money to the school district? And, and just better understanding that historical relationship and, and kind of how we are in the place we're in now and the amount that we provide to them.
Yeah. So from 1999 to 1996, the Brookings Municipal Utility actually provided the funding directly to the Brookings School District. After that time, it became part of the transfer to the city that it would go to the Brookings School District. In current times, there's not a direct correlation to how much of that transfer should go to the Brookings School District. The government, city's governance and ends policy does state that up to 15% may be taken from that transfer and given to the school district. But that is at the city council's sole discretion. Brookings Municipal Utility does not tie any strings, if you will, to their funding that comes into the city. That's part of the city council's governance and ends policy. And then at that point, it's a funding decision, as is the outside agency process as a whole, for city council to determine, based on the application from the Brookings School District, how well they've justified their use of funds, what they would like to use them for, and then how city council sees that align with the other priorities of the community as a whole.
Do we know what happened historically that changed the way that, that, that funding was kind of moved from one end to the other?
You brought the heavy hitter up here.
I do. I'm gonna ask Steve Meyer if he can give us a little bit of more history on that.
I'm Steve Meyer, the General Manager for Brookings Municipal Utilities. And, and my other title is historian. But I, I don't remember all the details about that, the history around that transfer. But I do know that at the time that it was started, the telephone enterprise was a very, very profitable enterprise for the city. And the, the city council and the utility board thought it was a good place for those surplus funds to go. And basically, in 1996, the Telecom Act of 96 came into play. There's competition introduced into the telephone enterprise, technology changed, and there just was not enough funds to sustain that transfer. And so the city and the, and the utilities agreed that the, the school district would not be funded anymore directly from the utilities and the city would determine how much funding they should get. Did I answer that question?
Yes, that does help. I'm curious to know, are you aware in other, in other South Dakota communities, is it commonplace for utilities to commit dollars or to have their, their funds go to school districts? Is that, is that a common occurrence in other communities?
Through staff research, we were not able to find any other comparable communities in South Dakota who have a municipal utility that do make a transfer like this to the school district.
And are we aware of how much funding other South Dakota cities provide to their school districts? Is Brookings on the high end or low end? Do we land somewhere in the middle in what we provide to our school districts?
To the best of our understanding, other South Dakota communities do not, their cities do not provide funding to the school district.
Thank you.
Other council members? Councilman Wendell?
I just wanna ask a follow-up, so we know this with certainty. So we did audit other South Dakota cities and confirm that there are not other South Dakota cities that contribute to their school districts. That's with certainty?
Yeah, we, our city manager had reached out to peer communities across the state and was not made aware of any of that do similar funding as this.
Thank you.
I could maybe add just a little clarification there. I don't believe that any tax revenue can be included in that transfer. So it usually had to involve a municipal utility. The law allowed for it if it involved non-tax money.
I wanna just follow up on my question and statement that I, I generally speaking, am supportive of our city and school partnership and the financial relationship. I just wanted to make sure we put a fine point on, on that if we were comparing to peer cities, the relationship.
Council, any other? Councilmember Brink?
Yeah, I wanted to just clarify. It seems like in previous years, and I see Dr. Willard is back here submitting this question for you, but it seems like in previous years, we were not shown a tie for any specific program when the funding application came in. It was more a general line item of cash. And this year, we noted that, that there's a potential for, for some junior kindergarten classes as part of that application. And Clint, I hate to put you on the spot, but if, if the city doesn't provide that funding, are you not gonna hold those junior kindergarten classes?
You wanna come up to the mic, Dr. Willard? Thank you, Mr. Meyer, but I wouldn't run away if I were you.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, good evening. Per the question, and again, this is certainly kind of an interesting question. In a broader scheme first, where I'd like to start, our budgeting processes are different because our fiscal years are different. We were on a fiscal year that begins July 1st and ends June 30th, which is in terms of budgeting cycle, different. If this allocation were not to come, it would certainly impact our current fiscal year because, as many of you know, because it is widely publicized, we're opening schools to kids August 31st. And that includes our junior kindergarten. So if this indeed were to happen in this budget cycle and understanding when that would take effect for the city, there certainly would be some implications for us, both in the immediate as well as the long term. And I, I just would caution as we ask questions about comparative cities. And I would refer us back to the comment that, that Mr. Wendell made earlier tonight about Brookings being the greatest community in the state of South Dakota. If we believe that and we wanna maintain that position, why would we use comparisons to others as a basis and foundation to make this determination? Just a thought. But I, right now, our intent is to continue with the junior kindergarten program, understanding that we would have to evaluate everything because of the implications that would have, both immediate as well as long term. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Certainly, it's challenging when we start talking about education and education funding. Many of us are parents, many of us have children that are, that are students in the Brookings Schools. As I thought about this, it seems to me like this is a perfect example of sometimes how you start something or you start funding something in government and it's maybe billed as a short-term thing. And there's never any way to, to step back or back up from, from agreeing to fund something. It's never graceful and easy to do. But to me, this is a situation that previous councils put us in through actions that happened a long time ago. The situation with the telephone utility and the flush nature of that business in the 80s and 90s is definitely a situation that no longer pertains today. We no longer are flush and filled with extra money in our budget to be doing things other than, than our basic needs. And so I just, I would like to see us at least be willing to have the conversation of what it would look like to move away from a direct cash funding model for the school district in favor of potentially something more like gifts and kind in terms of resource sharing, facility sharing, things that we can maybe do to help the schools through, through mowing of, of certain properties or, or ways that we could partner like that that maybe would be less cash-based and that would take us away from having to have this, this dance every funding cycle where we have this conversation again and we, you know, we kind of quibble over these, these dollars, 195,000 to 207,000 dollars, which we both know in the grand scheme of things is not gonna make or break the school district's budget or the, the city budget, but it's a precedent and it's a, it's a strategy that we have to think about moving forward. So that's just a statement at this point in time. I don't have an idea of what that would look like, but I, I think it's worth us talking about honestly as a council.
Other council members? Councilmember Bacon?
Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Councilmember Tilton Burn?
I, I just wanted to maybe clarify the reason that I requested to have this topic brought in the study session is not at all because I oppose the city providing funding to the school district. In fact, I generally support the idea of us funding the school district. I think that one of the reasons we have one of the greatest school districts in the state is because of the commitment that the city of Brookings provides to the school district. And I think there's no better investment in our community than in the education of, of our children. The, the primary reason I wanted to bring this forward is because there was, it seemed to be that there was this historical component to the way the funding happened and that there at one time had been a direct line item from some point in the utilities to what the school district received. And in, in my mind, I would like to see us somehow get back to a model more like that where rather than each funding cycle, we're looking at a proposal the school district brings forward and deciding how much money we will give to that proposal, but rather see if there is a way to still link a specific revenue source to the school district and move forward in that regard. I think that doing so would allow better, for better planning, both on the city's budgeting and also for the school district's budgeting. And so I just wanted to clarify the purpose for which I brought this topic forward. It is not my desire to see that, that we not fund the school district because I do think that that is one of the greatest investments we can make.
Councilmember Bacon?
I'm just basically going to reiterate what Holly just said. I've always been very proud of the fact that we have supported the Brookings School System. I bragged about the superior education, K-12 education my children received here and that there were activities and opportunities in our school district that not many can offer. So I don't want to see us back completely away. I would rather, you know, I, I like Holly's suggestion, if we could link it to something, understanding that we may have to step back on the amount because of the fact that we aren't as flush as we used to be. But I personally would not want to see us stop providing a subsidy funding to the school.
Councilman Collins?
If we hold back the funding, where does that money go then? Is that gonna be to pay down or where would that money go?
Yeah, so the school district is funded out of the city's general fund currently. So it would be an operational change if you were to increase or decrease that amount as, going back to the budget presentations. Our city general fund is balanced, so it's kind of in a vacuum, if you will. So if you were to increase or decrease the school's funding, you would then have to make a reflective increase or decrease somewhere else in the general fund to ensure that it is a balanced budget that city council would ultimately pass.
Okay. I, I thought that money was gonna go somewhere to different programs or something. Am I wrong on that?
If the city council were hypothetically to decrease the school's funding
Okay.
It would, you would be able to redistribute it in the general fund. So the United Way funding source that was also discussed comes out of the general fund. So that would be a potential source where city council could divert those funds too. But it could go anywhere in the general fund.
Yeah, I think if it, you know, a different program, I think the K-33 is a very important program and I would, I'd like to see the money go there. I totally understand everybody's point. I don't wanna see the funding stop going to the schools, so.
I do think it would be worth us doing a deeper dive into what the gifts and kind picture really fully looks like and how much intangible support is given from city resources to school district. I think that's a fair question and something that would be helpful for us to quantify. I know a city staff has been working on that somewhat, but we don't have that full picture today or tonight. But I definitely think that would be part of our next conversation on this, to see what that looks like. Because what if we find out that we're, you know, providing X number of dollars worth of services every year and then that would be in, above in addition to the, the cash that's being transferred? So I, I think that it's worth having that holistic view.
Councilman Niemeyer?
I would like to agree with this statement. I think that it would be helpful to have an assessment of what our gift and kind amount is that we currently provide and maybe even also look at where there may be opportunities to increase that. I'm not, I'm certainly not opposed to exploring that. So I would also support doing a deeper dive in that as well.
And maybe even having a conversation with the school board and the school district to figure out what are the areas that would be most helpful or most impactful if we were to look at something like that, you know, where, where are the opportunities for the biggest amount of support that way? That would maybe help us.
Now, Councilmember Niemeyer?
So we did, just in the past month here, we did a gift and kind, if I understand right, on the, by the track and field grounds. So, I mean, we, we've already done that partnership thing numerous times. We do have property intermingled right there, like with the baseball field. We do do that kinda stuff. I think this obviously is, is something that the school expects in their budget every year and we have annually done this ever since I've been on council and previously, obviously. Yes, the telemarketing industry is gone, gone downhill. And so, and, and I, and I see in the notes here that also the school district gets a 10% discount on their electrical.
That is correct. That equates to about 60,000 to 70,000 dollars per year.
Okay. So, you know, and I, I've always looked at this as, you know, the money that we get from BMU as kind of a dividend, as sort of speak, for being the owner of the utilities in the city. So some of the money that we get here, the school obviously has used, used some of those utilities also and so they should get a percentage of it. I get that. I, I guess, you know, the 195,000 is what we've, we've specified this year. I think we should stay at it. If we go up or down, then we've got a, we've got Rob Paul to pay Peter somewhere. So I, I like the idea of, of, you know, future projects that have a gift and kind also, but maybe leave that 200,000 to 195,000 alone and help them out in their budget in a different way, in a different direction.
Any other comments from the council? Okay. Mr. Assistant City Manager, Mr. Meyer, Dr. Willard, thank you for participating. Okay, let's look ahead to the next meeting, which happens to be next Tuesday at 6 o'clock. A presentation about the new Assistant Police Chief we introduced, first reading on the 2021 budget, discussion on replacing ordinance 20-010 on COVID, and then possibility of two malt and two video licenses and what we all wait for, progress report by the Assistant City Manager. Anything you'd like to add to an agenda upcoming meeting? entertain a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign?
Good night.[1793.53][1793.53]